Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the sixth session of Natick 101 Sessions. These sessions are designed to be recorded so that you can learn about town departments and services and other community organizations. All of our previous sessions are available online on the town's website at natickma.org. And you can see the school committees was last month, so you can take a look at what they did. And I want to welcome everyone who's here in person. We're also being livestreamed on YouTube by Natick Pegasus. My name is Linda Wolfhager.
My name is-
Select Board.
My name is Kristin Pope.
And we're going to be going through our presentation tonight. Kristin?
And we wanted to give you a fun fact to kick it off, is that Linda and I are the eighth and the ninth women to be elected to the Select Board in its history. Kathryn Coughlin, our chair, is the seventh woman. So just a fun fact before we get started. If I'm repeating myself, pardon me, but I wanted to direct you to the QR code that is on the presentation. If you have a question and want to submit it, you can do that through our QR code.
All right. For this evening, we're going to be having a presentation approximately 45 minutes, and then we'll go into the Q and A for another 45 minutes. We'll be joined by the rest of our board, who is here in the audience tonight. All right. So Kristin's going to let you know about the Select Board and an overview of what it's all about.
So, what is the Select Board all about? That's why we're here tonight. I first want to start by saying that the Select Board is a five-member board. Our current iteration of the board includes three women and two men. We are elected to three-year terms. Two of our board members are up for reelection this year. The duties and the powers described in the Natick Charter, the Natick Bylaws, and the Mass General Laws are what encompass what our duties are. We are considered the chief policymakers for the town. We are not involved in the day-to-day town operations. The administration of all the fiscal, prudential, and municipal affairs of the town shall be vested in an executive branch headed by a Select Board. That is what resides in our charter. And when we say that we cannot be involved in the day-to-day personnel decisions, that work happens through our TA or Town Administrator. And now we'll talk about town governance, and I'll pass it back to Linda.
Thank you, Kristin. All right. So, what does the Select Board do? A lot of people think that the Select Board runs the town, and that can't be farther from the truth. We really work in conjunction with other boards and committees. So the two main boards that run the town, and I'm going to say "town writ large." You may have heard the term "town" referred to in different ways, and it's referred to the municipal side of government. So the Select Board has purview over the municipal side, and that means our GPW, our police, our fire, our employees here at Town Hall that run HR and finance, and our community and economic development offices, et cetera, et cetera. The school committee is responsible for all things school-related. There's a divide there. It's part of Mass General Law, so we have no say over that. And in addition, there are other boards and committees that have various powers and duties that the Select Board is not part of. Both the Planning Board and the Board of Health are elected boards. The Planning Board, for example, they have powers to make a master plan, and they have policies to govern the future growth and development of the town. They consider special permits. Select Board's not part of that. The Health Department, they have the ability to create rules and regulations that affect the environment and public health. Again, that's not the Select Board. The Zoning Board of Appeals and the Conservation Committee are two committees that happen to be appointed by the Select Board, but their day-to-day activities are not governed by the Select Board. So the ZBA, for example, it's a quasi-judicial board, and it hears appeals of denied building permits, petitions for special permits and variances. CONCOM is responsible for managing conservation lands, implementing the Wetlands Protection Act and things like that. Again, things not under the purview of the Select Board. And then there's our legislative branch in town, and that's Town Meeting. That is an elected office where we have 10 precincts, and there's 18 members from each precinct on three-year terms. Town Meeting is responsible for approving all of the financial expenses for the town. So, our budget is prepared by the Town Administrator. It's a Town Administrator's budget, but every expense has to be approved through Town Meeting. They also approve legislations for zoning, so zoning bylaws and other things that come before that. Again, not the Select Board. All right. So, that kind of distinguishes the Select Board from other things. So what, if you go to the next slide. So what kind of meetings do we have? Last year, we had over 40. I think our chair said we had 44 meetings. We typically have meetings twice a month on Wednesdays in this very room, the Ed Delott Meeting Room on the second floor of Town Hall. Usually starts at 6:30, sometimes at 6:00, if we have an executive session. Now, what's an executive session? There are 10 permissible reasons for having an executive session. The Mass Open Meeting Law requires us to have our deliberations in public. We're not allowed to talk amongst ourselves and make decisions outside of a public meeting. The meetings have to be posted with what we're going to be talking about. There are exceptions. So, for executive sessions, that typically would be at the beginning of our meeting. We would talk about things typically involving litigation. More commonly, the collective bargaining agreements with our 10-plus unions in town, if there are any staff discipline issues, or if we happen to be negotiating property contracts. We also have retreat meetings a few times a year, and we use that for planning sessions. Those are typically unlike these meetings that we normally have. They're not recorded. We have them off-site. However, they're still public meetings, so you can come to a retreat meeting. But we talk about our goals and what we want to do for the year, usually at those meetings. Another part of our things that we do is public hearings. And public hearings are special in that they have to be noticed. We have to create a public hearing notice. We publish it typically in the newspaper, the Metro West Daily News. They're also available, there's a website online called masspublicnotices.org, which has all of the meeting notices for every town in the Commonwealth. So if you want to take a look at that, you can find out what hearings are coming up for our various boards, like the Planning Board, the ZBA, the Conservation Commission, and the Select Board. So mostly, they involve things like alcohol licenses. We had one at our last meeting last week for ZD's Restaurant on Spine Street to give them an all-alcohol license. So we do that fairly regularly. And we also have public hearings for things like, ever source might come and say, "We want to put in a new utility pole somewhere." So, and those are all things that have to be noticed and are handled separately in our meetings. All right. So next, Kristin will talk about our Select Board responsibilities.
So for our main responsibilities, we're going to break this up into main responsibilities and then some additional things that we do. The first is appointments. Hiring the professional staff. The Select Board is responsible for appointing the Town Administrator, the Police Chief, and the Fire Chief. Policies. We are responsible for adopting broad policies that are followed by town agencies under its authority. And so, much of what you will hear us doing in our meetings are discussing policies, revoking policies, making changes, and bringing our policies up to date so that our Town Administrator and the other agencies in town can enforce those. Committee appointments. We have a lot of committees in town, and if you are interested in joining one, please, by all means, check the website. We make appointments to town boards and committees. And so, even in this year, there is a link, it's on this page, but you can go to our website, and just about every committee has an expiring term this year. And our town runs on volunteers, and so we encourage you to volunteer. The Select Board sets the strategy direction. It's critically important in terms of the way that the town is going to move over the next five, 10, however many years, keeping in mind that our board is always staggered because our terms are expiring at different times. We monitor the financial performance. Our financial team comes and gives us regular reports to let us know how the town is doing. And we deliberate and talk about what needs to be done, what is forecasted, and keep a close watch on the finances of the town. We grant licenses and permits, things like liquor licenses. Those are things that come through the Select Board. We are the litigation authority, and we spend quite a bit of time with our Town Council if there is need for litigation. As Linda talked about earlier, personnel matters, things of that nature. Another aside that we do, it's just here in the notes, so I'll share it, street closures, things like street closures, things that you may have not known that the Select Board is responsible. Street closures is one of those things. Now we're going to go and start breaking out some of the main responsibilities, like appointments. And we talked about this a little bit. Who do we appoint? Town Administrator, Police Chief, Fire Chief, the Comptroller, the Director of Veteran Services, and Town Council. Those are all Select Board appointments. And I will read this to you. "The Board conducts the performance review of the Town Administrator and the Director of Veteran Services, and the Select Board Chair participates in the reviews of the Police and the Fire Chief." Now we'll talk about policies.
All right. As Kristin mentioned, as the chief policymaking authority in the town, we take that very seriously. We are continuously reviewing and updating our policies. One of the things that we do when we set our goals every year is to look at those policies that need updating, or that maybe that we need some new ones. So here's what we did last year. There's a number of policies that we updated or approved, things like the constituent rail trail use policy. We don't do these alone. So when we're doing policy updates, we consult with staff. We look at policies from other towns. If it's a new policy, we might consult with the Mass Municipal Association, the MMA. So policy development takes a long time. We do a lot of research. Our board does a lot of outside research when we're looking at formulating different policies. And I'm going to give a big shout-out to our chair on the alcohol policy, which was really revised this year significantly, multiple iterations. We've had multiple meetings, and I think it's really going to be a gold standard for other communities going forward. A lot of time goes into that. So, we also involve Town Council in that. We want to make sure, or even potentially Special Council, if there's things that we feel that needs special consideration. The policies are always discussed at public meetings. We welcome public input on it. So here, like I said, here are some of the things that we've done, and I'm sure you're familiar. As I mentioned, the alcohol policy, the immigration policy got a lot of discussion this year. The naming public places policy. So there's a lot of different things that you wouldn't necessarily think about the Select Board getting involved with. For example, the tree policy. Again, something that might have come from town staff. It's not some, but it's important, and it sets the tone for the town, for all of our town employees to know what to expect, and also for the public to know. We also look to see what might be obsolete. We have a number of policies. Some of them are no longer applicable. For example, we had a smoking policy that we revoked this year because it's covered under Mass General Law. We don't need to replicate Mass General Law, so we rescinded that. Same thing, we had a remote meeting policy that also was no longer needed because it was covered elsewhere. Or, the policy might be subsumed in another policy. We had a taxi cab fuel surcharge policy, but that's now part of the taxi cab and livery policy. So not only are we looking at policies, we're looking at the ones we have to see which ones make sense to have, and if there's things that we can combine, we'll do that. We are looking to get all of our policies updated and placed on the town website that's not there yet, but we're getting there, and we hope to be very transparent about this process. All right. Next, Kristin's going to go over some of our committee appointments.
As we spoke about earlier, our volunteers really run this town. I mean that in jest, but I think you understand what I'm saying. Our town runs on volunteers. Everyone who is volunteering their time is a beloved member of this town, because really, we have dozens of committees, and these committees really do make decisions on the behalf of the town. And based on what our committees come up with, we make recommendations. We move forward on those things. And so, I'm not going to read every single committee that is here, but I am going to talk a little bit about the importance of how you can get involved. Getting involved in our committees is a great way to understand how town government works, even on just one. And if you have a passion about something, you can make that passion, you can enliven that passion and bring it to the town, and collaborate with other volunteers, and really make tremendous impact in Natick. And so, a number of these committees as well, the Select Board tries to have a liaison. And so you may hear of things saying, you know, people saying, "Well, why is there a Select Board member a part of this committee? Isn't that double-dipping?" Well, typically, we're not voting members on those committees. We are there to advise, we're there to bring information back to the Select Board, and we're there to make sure that they have what they need, that the committee has what they need, and if they have questions, or we need to understand the charge, we can be a part of that process. The way to getting on a committee is to apply. You can go onto the website, see what committees have openings, see what committees have expiring terms, and you can apply to be on that committee. And then once your application is within the town, it gets put on one of our agendas. And then there's an opportunity for you to come and talk to us, and give us a little bit of background, and maybe why, what is your desire to be on that board? And then we have the opportunity to deliberate and hopefully appoint. And I would say it's one of my favorite things to do, because it allows us to get to know people in town, and it allows us to celebrate the tremendous talent and gifts and efforts that we have here, who really give tirelessly a lot of people, and so sacrificially of their time to our many committees. So, we also have, in addition to the committees that were on the previous slide, other committee appointments that you may not know that the Select Board handled. And some of those are our Audit Advisory Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, our Design Review Board, the Natick Contributory Retirement Board, our Natick Housing Authority, our Recreation and Parks, our Registrars or Voters, and lastly, there are some regional committees, like the MBTA Advisory Board, and the MWRA Advisory Board, and a few more. And so, again, there is a link here, and so I encourage you to go to the website to look up the vacancies.
As Kristin mentioned, we always have vacancies available. In fact, we just learned about two today from the Historic District Commission. And I would encourage people that want to apply to list more than one committee. When you apply online, you don't just have to say, "I'm interested in Committee X." Sometimes people might say they're interested in three or four different committees. So when those appointments become available, you'll still have your application open and be available for appointment. But I will say, and I don't have the statistics on this, but I would say that maybe half of our appointments, and our Select Board can correct me if I'm wrong, are not competitive. We have people that come, and I got a thumbs up from the audience. So you'll just see those on our consent agenda, meaning that they're not even discussed. So people, we have more openings than we have volunteers for. So this is why we would really, if there's anything that you're interested in in town, we encourage you to apply. All right. So here's some of the other things that the Select Board does. Kristin took you through some of our main responsibilities, but wait, there's more. We also, as mentioned, set licensing fees. Those include alcohol, entertainment licenses, and adult-use marijuana. We recently reviewed a number of our fees and increased a few. We look at other towns when we do that to make sure that we're competitive, so we do an analysis whenever we set fees. And, you know, brings in some money for the town. We act as the road commissioners. The Select Board's the road commissioners. We review the roadway improvement plan, which should be coming in the next month or two. We'll have a revised five-year plan. It's always very interesting to look at that. That'll be available on our website. It'll tell you the condition of all the roads in town, and what it would cost to bring them up, to be fully repaired. We approve street closings. So if you're having a block party-
Invite us.
[laughing] That has to come to the Select Board. We also are the water commissioners. So we set water rates, and then we typically do that once a year, but not the sewer rates. That comes from the MWRA. Can't do much about that. And then those are more than the water rates. I'm sure you all know, when you look at your water bill, and you're wondering, "Why is it so high?" We serve as the appellate board for things like tree removal decisions, water and sewer abatements. We hear quite a few of those. We do have a water and sewer abatement policy that the town staff is eligible to just approve, but if things are outside of those parameters, it comes to the Select Board, and we typically hear from the property owner about what their issue was and what they've done to resolve it. And also dangerous dog decisions. If our animal control officer has made a decision that there's a dangerous dog, and that's appealed, that will come before the Select Board. So another main thing that you might have heard about is we adopt a residential factor once a year, and what that means is that we determine what the tax rate is. We determine what the split is between residential tax rates and commercial and industrial properties, CIP rates. Right now, in Natick, we have a single tax rate, meaning that the tax rate is the same if you're a business versus if you're a resident. There's people that are thinking that that's not a good idea, so we will talk about it again, and we've agreed to actually bring that up in the next few months for the Select Board to discuss outside of the normal hearing time in November. So just this week, we prepared and approved the Spring Town Meeting Warrant. That's one of our jobs. It's a formality. We had a three-minute meeting to do that. Four? Turbo meeting. But we have to do it. It's part of the responsibility. And another kind of administrative task is to refer any zoning articles that come to the town to the Planning Board. Planning Board can't take them up until we refer to them. So that's another thing that we do. So any town meeting articles that involve zoning come to us, and we pass it on to the Planning Board. We also sign the warrants for the payment of town bills. Wasn't around at the time when, they actually had to be signed by hand, but I understand that was a very time-consuming and cumbersome process. Now we do it electronically. Select Board's also responsible for disposing of town property. Sure you've all heard about 5 Auburn Street. That's why it was before the Select Board. The Select Board is the body to make those decisions. Another fun fact is, we can observe the town boundaries every five years and go through and identify, just in case Wayland has changed the town marker. We want to make sure that, you know, Natick keeps all of its property, and I think we get paid-
Fifty bucks.
-$50 for doing that. So that is our salary as the Select Board, the $50 for-
And those who say that the Select Board makes the big bucks, you were right.
[laughing] And lastly, we have the authority to place an override on the ballot, and I'm sure that many of you are aware, and if you're not, I hope you will be soon, learning about the override. There's a great override page on the town website, natickma.gov, and you'll find all the information that you need about the override there. We recently did vote to put it on the ballot for March 25 for $7 million. All right. Next slide, please. Okay. This is an example of the Select Board in action. What you see here in the background is Washington Street, looking north on Washington Street from 135. And here's some examples of some of the things that the Select Board does, and you can see examples on that street. So starting from the left, public art. We have, I don't know if you've noticed downtown, but we have public art in the sidewalk areas, in the crossings. We have to approve that. So any public art, we approve. Utility poles, I mentioned earlier, if there's relocations, that comes before the Select Board. The parking meters. We determine where they're placed on public ways, and we set the rates, and also the parking policy. And in December, we typically also vote to make the meters free during the holidays. The water rates, I mentioned, we set water rates, not sewer rates. The alcohol licensing and enforcement, so not only do we license alcohol establishments, but we deal with violations. So if someone has an alcohol license violation, that comes before the Select Board, and we deliberate on what the consequences of that might be. And as mentioned, we dispose of town property, not that we're looking to get rid of the library. That's just an example of town property. We also look at the capital plan. We approve the five-year capital plan, and I have to say, I'm very encouraged at our level of capital planning has just gotten so much more professional over the years. Our five-year capital plan is well thought out. We take a look, let's say, at the library and plan it out. And what are the things that need to be done over the next 20 years? What kind of shape are our buildings in? And so really understanding the life cycle for our buildings, and what needs to be replaced, and what the timeframe of that replacement is, that all goes into putting our capital plan together. And it's a really good document. And it doesn't mean that it won't change over time, because it frequently does. Our needs change. We can decide that we might want to put something off, but the Select Board does approve the long-term plan. We also have veteran squares, dedications. You'll see us at all of them. I think we had three of them this year. We go to that. We're also potentially contemplating other square dedications to honor other important figures in town other than just veterans. So look out for that potentially in the future. And then finally, the street closings. You know, like I said, if you're having a block party, you come to the Select Board. All right. Next is, Kristin is going to talk about the Select Board members.
So this is your current Select Board, and I am tremendously blessed to serve with all of these hard-working, dedicated people. Kathryn Coughlin is the Chair of our Select Board, Bruce Evans is the Vice Chair, Richard Sidney is the Clerk, and you have myself and Linda. We have two members who are up for reelection, Kathryn Coughlin and Bruce Evans. Please look for their names on the ballot. And, again, this is the current iteration, by, meaning March 2024 to March 2025. The Board has the potential to change every single year, and I think that's important to know. Every year, someone is up for reelection. And so, the Board may look different in its next iteration, but this is your Select Board.
So after the town election, we have what's called a reorganization meeting. So it's a quick meeting where we'll typically vote on who the officers are going to be for the next year. So we'll vote on the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Clerk, and that will come up right- and that will come up right after the March election. All right, so the select board, in addition to working on all of the things that you've just seen, we really work very hard to, to learn about things, to become educated. One of the things I think that we're all very proud of is the Metro West Leadership Academy. Rich Sidney and I are participants this year. Bruce and Catherine and Kristin are all graduates. It is a wonderful program throughout Metro West, developed to professional development for community leaders. It's really also addresses some personal growth. We make wonderful connections throughout Metro West. It's a year-long program. I think it's incredibly valuable. We also participate in many Mass Municipal Association events. There's webinars, there's, you know, there's a couple next month. There's, there's breakfast that we go to. Kristin and I went to a woman's breakfast in, where was it? Like Littleton or some place like-
Devens.
Devens, yes, in Devens. In the fall, there'll be another one, I think, this spring. So where we can, you know, learn, we meet other select board members, other, other people in the community and make those connections. We also all attend the Mass Municipal Association Annual Conference that just took place in January. It's a three-day event. There are keynote speakers. We heard from the governor, the lieutenant governor, various other people. There are seminars that you go to to learn about various topics. There's a trade show. There's networking events during the conference. So it's very valuable, and we go to that as well. And that's what the Connect 351 is all about. That's the 351 towns in Massachusetts. And then we also represent the select board on other boards and committees. I think Kristin touched on some of those. So we, you know, we have participation in other committees. For example, I'm on the Economic Development Committee as well and really getting to understand some of the issues that, that, that our business owners have.
Absolutely. I serve on the Council on Aging. And all of these opportunities, and they're not just relegated to the select board to participate in these, but all of these opportunities help us to serve better. There's a scripture that says, "Iron sharpens iron." And so getting to work with other select boards in other towns and just hear how, what's working and what's not working is helpful for where Natick is going. You can meet us here at the select board meeting on the Wednesdays, but you can also meet us in many more informal ways. And so two of those are our office hours. The second Saturday of the month, you can find a select board member at the Natick Farmers Market. That is from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 during the winter months. The Natick Farmers Market is held inside of the Common Street Spiritual Center, and during the warmer months, it's held outside. On the fourth Thursday of the month, we are at the Community Senior Center from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And we look forward to meeting you and hearing about what your concerns are and helping to field those to our town employees to, to best represent you and, and hopefully find a solution and a resource for whatever your issues are. We are also present at as many events as we can attend. Some of the events that we went to last year are the Town Square dedications, as Linda talked about, Natick Days. We always have a table at Natick Days, the parades, the Memorial Day and Veterans Day parades, and community forums. It is our goal and to, to really be present in-town activities, activations, and events, and a lot of times divide and conquer. So you may see a couple of us at one event, a couple of us at another event during certain times of the year. There's a lot of things going on, and so we may not all show up at all of the same events, but you will find us meeting you where you are at all of the different opportunities in town. The next one coming up is about the budget. There's a forum, an upcoming forum about the budget, and that is on March the 12th.
All right, what are other ways you can connect with the select board? There's email. We have an email address, selectboard@natickma.org, that goes to the entire board. And all of the board reads every email. So we read the emails that come in. So that is probably the most efficient way to reach the entire board. We read them all, and if it pertains to a topic that's under consideration by the select board, we'll typically post that email online. So it's not only available to us, but your opinion is also shared with the town. But you can also contact us individually. So those are our email addresses. They're on the website if you want to talk to us. I think if you want to meet with a select board member, I think we're all willing to do that. If you want to talk one-on-one, we're available. We want to make ourselves available. And of course, attend our meetings. You can attend in person and Zoom at Natick Pegasus, usually on Wednesdays, as we mentioned. And you can sign up for notifications of those meetings on our website. There's a link there, but if you want to know when the select, next select board meeting is, if you sign up for notifications, you'll get something in your email that tells you it's coming. Now, an important thing to say is, please, don't look for a response from a select board member through social media. The issue with, with that, and I think it's, a lot of people don't understand this, and it is difficult, because somebody posts a question, and they expect an answer from someone from the select board. And the problem is, we really can't in some instances, because that's a violation of open meeting law. And what open meeting law defines, it defines deliberation as oral or written communication between a quorum of a public body. So if we have a quorum of people on Facebook that belong to a popular Natick group, and one of us starts to debate about a topic that is under consideration by the select board, that could be an open meeting law violation. So that, it makes it very difficult. And what, what, what we're told through MMA, et cetera, it just says, "Members of public bodies must be careful not to engage in deliberation with other members of the public body through social media." If a member communicates directly with a quorum of the public body over social media platforms such as Facebook or X, it may violate the open meeting law. And I think we all take the open meeting law very seriously on this board. So it's not that we're not responsive. And I think that if you want to reach out individually to a select board member or to the committee as a whole, if you have a concern, we will absolutely try to help you. But if you don't see postings on social media, that's the reason why. Okay, that's, that's it for our presentation. A little under 45 minutes. And again, this is the QR code for anyone that happens to be watching on YouTube and you want to send us a question. We, we look forward to hearing your questions. So what we're going to be doing next, we're going to be joined by the rest of the board, and Kristin will be accessing the questions that came online and direct to the board. And I put in a plug for our next Natick 101 sessions, and that's going to be Public Works. That's going to be on Tuesday, March 18th, at the DPW Building. So shout out to them, if you haven't been, to the DPW Building. Join them for the, for the next session. All right, so here we are. We're all going to come on in here. We've got-
Squeeze in, let's get cozy.
We've got-
We like each other.
We've got Rich Sidney here, Bruce Evans, and Catherine Coughlin at the end of the table. We're all going to squeeze in here. And look forward to hearing your questions, both online. We have some already submitted, and if there's anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question, we, I believe we have a mic available, or you can go to the podium, your choice. So thank you very much for listening to our presentation, and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, so we have a question in the audience.
Do it from here. Thank you. You're very thorough. Thank you all very much. One thing you didn't mention, small duty, and excuse me for requesting one at the same time I asked the question, is proclamations. So can you say a word about proclamations?
I will assign that question to the chair.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. From time to time, a request will come from a department. Longtime member of the department retiring, or I think the most recent one was Deputy Chief Dan Dow. So we work with the department to craft a proclamation. Sometimes they're humorous, sometimes they're a recitation of their accomplishments, achievements. We also issue proclamations. The last non-person one, I think, was for the recognition of Pride Month. We issued one in June for Pride Month, National Pride Month. And so there's no real reason, there's no rhyme or reason. We don't have, that's probably a policy we could look into, crafting a policy on when those are appropriate and, and how they're done. Thank you for that question, Mr. Deveraux.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to move to a question that was sent through the QR code. So this question is, "What is your process for making decisions on issues?" I'm going to assign this question to our vice chair, Mr. Bruce Evans. And if you need me to repeat it, let me know.
I think I got the gist.
Okay.
It's, you know, usually we get a lot of the background, and it depends on how detailed the question is and how complex the question is, how, how much deliberation is involved. If it's the, if it's a complicated issue, we get a lot of emails. We get a lot of background from either the town administration or other entities, maybe the planning board. But we then assimilate that information and discuss it amongst ourselves at meetings, right? As Linda pointed out, you cannot discuss this, anything outside of an open meeting. And it is an open process. It's sometimes like watching sausage being made. But a lot of times, we put our issues out. We have questions. We get those questions answered, either amongst ourselves or by the town administration. We then try to formulate and move to an agreement on that. And we're able to do that a lot, I think, by listening, doing active listening to each other and having respectful conversations. I can say unequivocally that everyone on this board is respectful of the other person's opinion. If we disagree, we do it agreeably, and that's how this board functions, and that's how a good board should function.
If I may, I'd also ask, if the, if the issue is a hot one, we spend as much time as we can listening to what the public has to say about it.
Thank you for adding me, yes.
We also do research. I think I mentioned that earlier, but I think everyone on this board does their homework. So if there's an issue, we look for news articles about it. We try to find where it's referenced elsewhere. We might talk to people in other towns that might have had something similar come up. So there's, there's a lot of background information search that goes on. And, and I can't, I'm sure I speak for my colleagues too. You know, any, any time that we come up with something, I'll set up a folder, and then there's all kinds of links to, to things that I've found elsewhere. Or we'll reach out to people in the community that we know might be better informed about this. So it's not just what's going on at our meetings, it's what we all do as individuals. The one thing that we don't do is we don't talk to ourselves about it. So it's really, when, when you come to a meeting and we're making a decision, there's a lot of input that's gone into it from a lot of different people.
Thank you. Madam Chair, do you want to jump in on that?
I think you all covered it pretty much. I do the same thing. Research, talk to people, talk to the public, listen.
Awesome. I think this, we're going to follow this format a bit, and this question I'm going to assign to everyone, because it is a pretty subjective question, and I don't think one person can define it for the board. So we'll start with you, Mr. Sidney. The question is, "Why do you want to serve on the select board?"
You know, that's an interesting, interestingly tough one for me. I've been serving the town for over 20 years now in various ways. Everything from outside involvement when I was on the Fourth of July Parade Committee 20-odd years ago. I've been on town meeting for over 20 years. I spent 10 years on the Finance Committee. One of my core values is to serve, and it's to serve in whatever way I'm called to serve. I, to be honest, I didn't seek this out when it came up. I, there was a need, and I saw it, and I talked to people, and they said, "You should serve." And I, so I ran. But really, I'm here to serve the public, to listen to the public, to do the right thing for Natick. I love this town. I've lived here for over 30 years now. And, you know, my, it's like I said, it's one of my core values, is to be in service.
Mr. Sidney took away many of my points. It's about serving the town. I was blessed with my father when I grew up. My father was very active in town politics. He was on the planning board. He was a councilman. I grew up in New Jersey, right outside New York City. So he was very involved, and I got active in that, in his activities and started tagging along as a son does, you know, just in the back of the room, seeing, seeing what is done, putting up signs and the like. But I think what happened in my case was I started out coaching youth sports, and I got to talk to a lot of parents, a lot of people in town, and I got to know a lot of people, and I began to get more involved in things outside of sports teams. And I joined the Finance Committee, which is where I met Rich and Linda, and worked there for 12 years. And it kind of prepared me for, for this role in that I understand budgets really well, I understand trade-offs very well. I also understand that, you know, when you have a 15-member board, which is what the Finance Committee does, you have to listen to other people. You have to assimilate knowledge. You have to work with other people and secure agreement. You don't get a budget passed unless you do that. So that, I think, paved my way to running for office on the select board. And when I ran for select board the first time, you know, I thought I knew a lot about the town. And what I quickly found out and was how little I actually knew about the town's details. And so the first year or so, I got very involved in learning how things work, how things work behind the scenes, and how I could contribute positively to that. And I think, having done that, I think really rounded out what my knowledge was for this. And as Mr. Sidney said, we're up here to serve, you know? Nobody likes, we're not getting paid. We get yelled at occasionally. You know, it's part of the package. It is, it is important to realize that you're, you're out here to try to help people. You wouldn't be up here if you didn't do that. So, thank you.
So my story actually starts in the schools, and I think there's a recurring theme here where I get my arm twisted into doing things. When my oldest son was a kindergartner at Lilja, they didn't have anyone to run the Lilja Fair. It's now renamed the Lilja Carnival, and I said, "Okay." And so from then, I got involved with the schools. I was co-president and president of the Natick Education Foundation. I was a longtime town meeting member, again, drafted by a neighbor who said, "We need people to run for town meeting. We don't have enough people in our precinct. Okay, I'll do it." And the same thing for select board. It was never on my list of something that I wanted to do. It was never on my list of something that I wanted to do. I was very happy being Finance Committee Chair. But this is a fairly new board. Our senior members are just completing their first term. And, you know, because I had a long history, a longtime town meeting member and Finance Committee Chair, somebody said, you know, won't you run for Select Board? And I thought about it, and I said, okay. I felt that the Finance Committee was in great hands. We've made a lot of changes in the Finance Committee to improve transparency. There's some really great people on that committee. So I didn't feel guilty about leaving, because I think that's really important, too. I don't think you can, you know, you can't leave a position where it might have hurt the town, so. And it didn't hurt that I was unopposed, so I didn't have to campaign, which made it a much easier, much easier way to say yes. But that said, I'm really glad that I am on the Select Board. I feel like all of my colleagues here are on for the right reason. I mean, there's nobody here that's on for ego, there's nobody here that's on for, you know, their own gratification. I think we all want to serve the town. We all want what's best for the town. Now, not everyone may agree with the decisions that we make, because everyone has their own opinion, but I think in our hearts, that's what we all want, and I'm really, you know, happy to be on this board.
I don't have the runway of service that my colleagues have. I am fairly new as it goes in Natick. I've lived in Natick for under 10 years. And in that time, I saw opportunities early on to get involved. The first for me was the Personnel Board. I joined the Personnel Board in 2020. I ran an ill-begotten write-in campaign for town meeting, and it just gave me this opportunity to meet people and get to know how the town is running. I come from a family of integrity where service is a part of what you do. It is just what you do. And so the further I got into understanding the town and getting to know my neighbors, I saw this opportunity for greater representation on the Select Board. Greater representation, a different perspective, a different perspective, and a different lived experience. And I thought that I could bring that to the Select Board to continue being what I consider is a conduit between people and resources. And that is my calling. My calling is to the well-being of people, and it is to the, to be a conduit, to get people connected to the resource that they need to live well. And the Select Board is an awesome place to do that. And so I'm grateful. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve and the opportunity to serve with these amazing people.
My story's similar to my colleagues. 30 years ago, last summer, I received the Truman Fellowship for Public Service, which is, gets Congressional Award given to people who plan to spend their life in public service. And I have done that, so either in nonprofits or in academia. There was a small stint where I bought a store and sold it, had it for four years and four days. And I spent that next year preparing to run for the Select Board, because that's where I thought I could serve best. I've been on the ZBA and Town Meeting, and public service is just really important to me.
Next question.
Be a theme there.
So we'll move on to the next question. Some really great questions, in fact. The next one, let's see, I'm doing a time check, we've got about another 30 minutes. This one I'm going to assign to the Chair, Madam Chair. When does the town discuss litigation with the public?
When it's done. So when litigation is completed, whether it's, you know, in court, court documents or public documents, you can read them, you can go to the mass courts and read all the public documents. But decision-making with regard to litigation strategy is within the purview of the Select Board, and we have updates from Town Council in executive session. And then when the matter is resolved, however it's resolved, those executive session minutes are made available to the public, and that information becomes public information.
Thank you.
I have something.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, just, it may seem that there's an event, and maybe you heard about it, but what happens a lot of times is it then goes to the judicial system. And the judicial system is, you probably would surmise, is not the most rapid thing that it goes through. So many times, it takes years. Many times, it gets partially concluded, but there are still pieces that aren't. So a lot of what we are unable to release, we'd love to be able to release, but we are prohibited from doing that legally, and we'd put the town in jeopardy would we try to do that. So that's why a lot of that occurs.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. This is a great question, and I'll pose this to everyone. We'll go, we'll start with Madam Chair, and we'll go back this way this time. If you had a magic wand to make Natick more equitable and inclusive within the Select Board's scope, what would be your first or your top action?
In this way.
And remember, you have a magic wand.
Within the Select Board's scope, that's, within the Select Board's scope. This is going to sound counterintuitive, but I would say, ensure fiscal sustainability. I think that protects people of lower income. Within the Select Board's scope, it's really difficult to think about. I mean, if we had a magic wand and could produce all the money in the world, it would be to buy housing and have affordable housing. But I, I'm at a loss for that one.
Okay.
Because we don't have a lot of power. I mean, we, it seems like we do, and we do a lot of things. But I don't know that we have something within the Select Board's power that could increase equity and inclusion.
So with the powers that we do have, the first thing that I thought about, and I don't think this is necessarily within our powers, I think this is like, this is a ZBA, this is a Planning Board, this is a larger issue, but the first thing that I would do if this were within our purview would be to make sure that our environmental justice areas were not all concentrated in one place. And by that, I mean, there are certain places in our towns that have far more concrete and less trees. And I would do a better job of distribution amongst apartment buildings and homes and things of that nature, so you didn't have places that were so concentrated with concrete and less trees. But I don't know if that's within our purview. The second thing that I would do is recruit people to be on our committees, so that we had a more full representation of what the town's demographics look like. That, I think, is in our purview because we appoint, but I would be on the recruiting side to get people to apply and to be at the table, so that our town committees were best representative of the town demographics.
Yeah, this is a great question, and I wish the magic wand could extend outside of the Select Board, because there would be a lot of things. But I'm going to agree with the Chair about fiscal responsibility. I think that's really important. It's in, and also understanding some of the programs that are available to help people. I think we're starting to do a better job of that. There's so much that's available outside of our state. There's programs that just aren't allowed in Massachusetts that are elsewhere, that it's frustrating to see that we can't do more to keep people in our community, to keep our seniors here, to, you know, make Natick more affordable. But, you know, we have to live with what we have. And again, if I could raise, you know, wave the magic wand, it would, to be, have better informed citizenry. I think we've made great strides with our communications, with our outbound communications, but there's still so much disinformation, misinformation out there, that it's hard to have good civil discourse when most people aren't informed. And, you know, to me, that's a very important issue, and I think that that's really, you got to have that foundation in order to make things, you know, more equitable for everybody.
Thank you, Linda. Magic wand, within the purview of the Select Board. Okay, if I had a magic wand, I would use it to create a time machine, to go back in time to a time where we, as residents and as a country, were listening to each other and not talking past each other, and worked on things collectively to the betterment of the country. I think that's something that we need to return to. I think it can be done, but it takes a lot of effort. And it takes that effort to bridge gaps. And I'm proud of, one of the things on the board is, we come from different backgrounds, we have different opinions. Residents come to us with different opinions, but we consider those opinions. We might not always agree with what we've heard, because we hear a variety of different things, but we try to work together for what we think is the best solution for that problem. But if I had a magic wand, definitely a time machine, and I'd also buy Apple stock and maybe Microsoft or a few other things.
Mr. Sidney.
So one of our favorite rules is the ditto rule, and I'm going to ditto everything everybody else said, but I'm going to expand on a couple of things. Ms. Coughlin said, good financial sustainability. I think that I might wave my magic wand for a pile of money that would last long enough to hire the staff we need to really run this town more effectively. I'd wave my magic wand and fix all the streets. I would want to make sure that, you know, somehow make sure that there was a clear communication of what everybody needs to know. I don't want to flood people with all the information there is, but people, different people need to know different information. If there were a magic way to feed each of you the specific information you need, I would absolutely wave my wand and make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Sidney. We have a question in the audience.
Hi, guys. The question's actually with regards to Ms. Coughlin and the recent incident where her car was vandalized. Have others experienced any similar incidents in the past, or is this a one-off unusual event that occurred? As a direct result of your work on the Select Board, obviously if it's personal, please don't.
I won't speak for my colleagues. What I'll say is that previous members of the Select Board have had to have police protection. Same thing with members of the school committee in a different time and place. I talked to former chairs of Select Boards around the time of the incident, and also talked to a few members of, who sat on the school committee during a particular difficult time. So I don't think it was a one-off. I also have publicly stated that I don't think it was a Natick resident.
If I may, I think, you know, at this point, I haven't seen any personally, I know it's happened in the past, but I think one of the more important things to recognize is we also have vandalism around town that occurs occasionally, that's not directed at us, but is directed at different populations in town. And when we hear about those, we do try to go out and support those populations.
Thank you. We have another question in the audience.
Yep, thanks. Hi, thanks for the nice presentation. I've enjoyed all these Natick 101 sessions. A lot of this is new to me, so I apologize if this was covered, but I know you were talking about the committees, and so you appoint people to the committees and stuff, but I guess, how do the committees, like, what responsibilities do the committees have to you? Like, do you assign them like a goal, or you think they're broad responsibilities? And do they report back to you, and then do you have to hold them accountable for doing or not doing whatever was assigned? And I guess along with that, do you also have the ability to like, create committees and disband committees? And I'm assuming like, the School Board Committee is probably separate, and that's permanent, but just broadly speaking, wondering how those work. Thanks.
That's a great question. So the committees have charges. They have charges. Some of them are in the charter, some of them are in the bylaws, so they do have charges for why they exist. And they, those charges include the number of members that should be appointed, where they're coming from, what the composition of those committees should look like. Some committees are created with very specific tasks. We had a town, I think it was a government study, that was done over the last couple of years, and that town, that committee had an expiration date. We've had a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee and a task force. They had a very specific charge and then an expiration date. All of the committees are required to take minutes, to take minutes of their meetings that they, that we then receive. And they are also periodically, from time to time, we will, we might invite them to the Select Board, especially if they are, especially if they are a board, excuse me, a committee that has a very specific task. That may mean that they have to come to the Select Board on a more regular basis, but some of the other ones, like Council on Aging, we may not see them regularly or even quarterly, but we may invite them and say, you know, we love an update. What is it that you all are working on or seeing or hearing? And, you know, let's make sure we're on the same page and we're aligned with whatever the town's goals are, because the town also has 2030 plans and additional plans. And so all of these committees need to align with where the town is ultimately headed. I hope that answers your question, and anyone else can chime in. Yes, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. I think, to answer the question, I want to differentiate a couple of things. One is whether it's information gathering. We appoint committees, and Kristin pointed this out as well, which is, you know, say there's an issue like, what do we do with the South Natick Dam? That was, that was a example of a broad-based study committee that went off and did all the research on that and reported back to the Select Board, and then gave us their final report and then disbanded it. There are other committees that are appointed by the moderator who oversees town meeting, right? And those are typically, if there's something on what's called the Town Meeting Warrant, that, let's say, let's think of an example, leaf blowers. There was a leaf blower article on the last warrant, and there would, they can, there's a number of actions they can take. Among them is to create a study committee that then reports back to town meeting with the results of that study. So there are two different types.
Yeah, if I may, just, and there's some boards and committees that are, for whatever reason, whether it's in our bylaws or state law, that are, once they're appointed, they're independent. So we appoint people to the Zoning Board of Appeals, but the Zoning Board of Appeals is an independent quasi-judicial body. We don't talk to them after we appoint them, frankly, and that's appropriate because they are independent. Conservation Commission is similar. They, once they're appointed, they're doing their thing according to the charge that they have. And so, you know, there are all sorts of boards, they, I think it's the Affordable Housing Trust is appointed by us, they're completely independent. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to also add that some of the committees are advisory to the Select Board. Like, Rich is on the Audit Advisory Committee. That is an advisory committee, and he'll report back regularly on those meetings to the Select Board. So it really depends on how they're set up, what their charter is, as my colleagues have said, about whether or not they come and report to us.
Great question.
Do we have any more questions from the audience? We have another question. We have another question online. So, this is a great question. Why not make each Select Board member represent a town geography? For example, group of 10 precincts, group the 10 precincts into five groups, one member per group. The goal, to reach a geo-base representation. It's a very fascinating question. Is there anyone who wants to volunteer to take this? Mr. Sidney? Okay.
Yeah, and I'm sure other members will. That's an interesting idea. We could do that, actually. We do that with our town meeting members. Right now, Select Board, under our charter and bylaws, is an at-large elected position. If we wanted to, as a town, make that change, it could be done. I suspect if that happened, it would be hard to get people from every precinct. You know, people step up when they can. You know, there is one particular precinct where we have a lot of trouble getting town meeting members. We typically have a lot of vacancies in that precinct. Everything we do to try and get people to show up just hasn't worked so far. We are elected, and I'm going to speak for myself, I am elected as a town meeting member to serve my precinct. As a member of the Finance Committee, when I was on, I was working for the town. Actually, I was working for Town Meeting, because that's what the Finance Committee does. As a Select Board member, I represent the whole town, and I'll talk to anybody in town. And I don't have to be from a particular precinct to go and talk to somebody and represent them.
Ms. Wolfhacker?
I think that's a great question. I think Kristin mentioned the Town Government Study Committee. I was on that committee. That committee recommended, was an advisory committee to the Select Board, we recommended the establishment of a Charter Commission unanimously. That's an effort that's kind of underway, but those are the kinds of questions that I think are really important for a Charter Commission to study and talk about. Some people might think that a Charter Commission means we want to become a city. It doesn't mean that. It means that really, we need to go in depth and look at our form of government. And I think that would be something that would be very interesting to explore about whether or not it made sense to do something like that. So I would advocate for that.
To add, just to add to what Ms. Wolfhacker just said, a Charter Commission is something that's, the voters decide, right? Much like the override vote that we're talking about and the question, I'm not sure of the exact phrasing of it, but it basically elects a Charter Commission to look at how the town governs itself and evaluate the alternatives and present some alternatives. And they may come back to the Select Board, and the Select Board then would have to put another item out to the voters that says, here's the proposal of, we want to change the town governance to be ABC. And that, again, goes to the voters, if it's a majority of the voters, I think it's a simple majority, then the change is the form of government. We had an example of this right next door, which was Framingham. Framingham was a town, but they found the governance of that town was becoming unwieldy with 130,000 residents or whatever the number is. So that's why they went to a city structure with a mayor and a council. And the council represents, I forget, it's not called precincts, but something like that.
Districts, wards.
Yeah, wards. That's what the word I was looking for. I knew it began with W. So that's another type of governance. So that's what the Governance Study Committee had wanted to do. It requires, I think, 4,500 signatures to get on the ballot, and there are efforts underway to hit that 4,500 number.
Last I heard, they were at about 1,600, and that's not a current number by any means.
And if you are interested in learning more about the Charter Commission or assigning the Commission, you can get in touch with Paul Joseph, who is also the Chair of the Economic Development Committee and also has Metro Works downtown Natick. He would, I'm sure, be happy to discuss it with you in further detail. Are there any more questions from the audience? And seeing as there are no more questions online, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this presentation.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for attending the Select Board's Natick One-on-One.